Mayor, we're ready.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a special meeting of a unified government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas Commission. Today is July 24th, 2025. Before I call the meeting in order, I want to remind everyone to please make sure that you announce yourself by name and title every time you speak, so the public that is participating knows exactly who is speaking. This is current guidance from the Kansas Attorney General's Office. And please make sure that when you speak that you speak clearly at an audible level into the microphone to ensure that your comments are heard and that they're being captured by the clerk per record. I'll now call this meeting to order. Prior to the meeting, I believe, Clerk, can you update those that may be within insider sound of some of our technical difficulties and how they can tune in?
Sure, Mayor. This evening, our broadcast will not be done live. We do not have live TV tonight. So anyone that would like to join, you can go to the Meetings and Events tab on the UG Clerk webpage and join the meeting live that way through Zoom.
Thank you, Clerk. I'll call the meeting in order, and Clerk, can you announce the meeting?
Good evening. You're hereby notified that a special meeting of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, is scheduled to be conducted on Thursday, July 24, 2025, beginning at 5:00 PM in the fifth-floor conference room of the Municipal Office Building, 701 North 7th Street, Kansas City, Kansas, for an update regarding ARPA funds, immediately followed by an executive session relating to consultation with counsel on matters that would be deemed privileged attorney-client communications, such as conversations regarding litigation or claims against the city. The executive session portion of the meeting is closed to the public under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. Roll call. Bynum, we have an absence memo. Burrows. Townsend, we have an absence memo. Burns. Ramirez.
Here.
Hill. We have an absence memo. Kane. Lopez.
Here.
Stites. Davis.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
Clerk, can you give me that tally? Those present.
We have six. With you, seven.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Stites is just joining.
I was there, I just couldn't answer. I just got on as a panelist, but here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This evening is scheduled for an update regarding the ARPA, the American Rescue Funding. I'll turn the matter over to our county administrator, Mr. David Johnston, and he'll make introduction and presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few months ago, the commission requested that staff present an update on where the unified government is on the update on the ARPA funds and the balances and where we are with unified government and our grantees are on funding. And our chief financial officer and her staff have compiled an update report, and she is prepared to provide that update. So I'm turning the microphone over to Dr. Shelley Kevi- Keneven, our CFO. So Ms. Kevi-ven.
Thank you very much. And Shelley Keneven, Chief Financial Officer. I'm joined here at the table by Leslie Stroshine, who is our deputy CFO, by Lupe, I gotta look at Valdovino, yay, who is our grants administrator. She joined us a couple of months ago. And then Debbie Johnser, who's our other deputy CFO. And so all of us have had different parts of ARPA that we've been working on. I know you all, many of you all, have really lived through this since the very beginning. After COVID, there was some initial funding through the CARES Act, and then there was more significant funding that came through ARPA, and this is an update on ARPA. So we received, oh, I forgot that I control this. There we go. Okay, so we received a total of eighty-seven point five million dollars in ARPA funds. We received those in '21 and '22, and they were designated between city projects and efforts and Wyandotte County. So we got an allocation for the city as well as the county. And so throughout all of this time, we have kept track of things in terms of which pot of money they qualified for to make sure we stayed compliant with the federal funds. We were required, as you might recall, to obligate all the funds by December 31st of 2024. And so we went through an effort with you all to identify where we thought we would have a funding that would be available to be reallocated. And you all then reallocated those dollars to a variety of initiatives. And so we then proceeded to get agreements with all of the subrecipients or outside agencies, or proceed with an internal project. And we did have all of our funds either spent or obligated by December 31st as required. We have a requirement that we have to spend the money by December 31st on 2026, and we will meet that. In fact, we'll probably exceed that. There's only one or two projects that will go through the end of 2026, and that was how they were set up initially. I'll highlight those in a minute. But our goal is to try and spend these funds down so that the community benefits from the grants as well as addressing a lot of capital improvements that are high needs. From an administration point of view, most of the grants have been administered internally, and we have not been backcharging our time primarily for the last two years to the grants because we wanted the dollars to go more into the community. And so early in the grant process, we did have a person that had a position that was fully funded and was the point person. And when that person departed, we did not backfill that, and it's been a combination of all of us taking on those responsibilities. We also hired IParametrics, you might remember, is a consulting firm. So there were commission-identified subrecipients, and so they have had the responsibility to work with those different agencies and review their requests for funding, review what their impacts and what their services have been to make sure it's compliant with ARPA rules. So they have helped us with that compliance. And then they also assist us with the quarterly and annual reporting. So initially, we had, from the commission, allocations in 2022. And then, as I mentioned, during 2024, you all had some reallocations that you were able to do because we had some other projects that we didn't require the funding any longer, and it made it available for additional initiatives. And so that was a process that you all directed. We have, as I said, reviewed all of the UG contracts and the projects. All of them were obligated. What that means is that we cannot add anything new to the list. What is on the list has to be the list. If we were to run into a situation where we had identified something and we were not going to need all the funding, let's say the bids came in low, then there's a whole process that we'd have to go through with the federal government to get permission. But the only thing that we could do is transfer the dollars to another already-funded initiative. Okay, so we wouldn't be able to add something brand new. Just highlighting that. I don't know that that will happen, but it potentially could. And if so, that would be the process, and we would work with you all on that. As I said, the goal is to spend as quickly as we can, but we are required to be completely done by '26. And so that's what the overall priority is. So in terms of the kind of categories, if you will, of what the allocations were of the eighty-seven point five million, very early on, we used the funding, as did many cities and counties, to assist funding our operations to stay open after COVID. So in '20 and '21, we used some of the funding, twenty-four million, to fund staff, essentially, operations. So that was done at the very, very beginning. And that was a very common situation for cities and counties, but also universities. And the effort was to try to keep places open, to keep serving the citizens and not have them shuttered the doors. Then we had, we're at seven point two, one million dollars of what we called immediate needs for public health, and I've added community services because there was kind of a variety of projects listed for that. Originally, that was eleven million, and that's where we had some of the money that was identified that we could reallocate to new initiatives. So that seven million dollars is what that category currently is. We had immediate needs for housing assistance, and that was one point eight million. And that was money that we worked with the United Way of Greater Kansas City, and they spent the money all in '21. So that was something that we were able to benefit Wyandotte County residents immediately. Then we had immediate needs for grant support. And so that was the one point three million dollars that is currently left for Grant Match. And I have a list of the grants that we've been identifying for Grant Match, which again, need to be qualified for the ARPA money. And then the administration, this would be the IParametrics, and then when the position was funded, as well as some additional staff support inside some departments, like the Health Department, totals about a million four, which is, in light of an eighty-seven million dollar amount of money, that's actually a very low administrative cost. Capital improvements needs, we have thirty-six point nine million dollars, and the details are in the report. And then I call on the commission subrecipients. These are the ones that you all went through and identified the agencies you wanted to fund. You had a committee, and we had those, and those are twelve million dollars. And then Bonner and Edwardsville, between the two of them, was two point six million dollars. So that's how all the money was allocated between the initial allocation in '22 and then the additional, smaller reallocation that occurred in '24. So diving just a little bit, you have all the details in your reports. I'm not going to highlight all the details. I know you have other visits tonight, and I know, as much as you love my presentations, you want to probably keep them short. But we've got a couple of just highlights for you. So with the immediate needs in the public health and community services, as I said, there was seven million dollars funded, and I'm reporting on how much have we spent? We spent almost all those dollars, which is fantastic. We're at almost a hundred percent. We have about seventy-four thousand left. And many times, that's just a timing thing in terms of when the final invoices get processed. But there are so many things that that seven million dollars was done. And in your packet, you have what's called an impact report. And the impact report is a summary by initiative or project that talks about the number of people that were served or benefited. So there's lots of examples for vaccinations, testing, a clinic that was run, public information. We had low-income legal services related to COVID, mental health services, food delivery in lieu of congregant meal sites. So there's just a plethora of different things that were done. And our Health Department was critical in a lot of those efforts, as well as some of our other departments that led some of these issues, efforts, like our Human Services Department. As I mentioned, the housing assistance, that was done by the Greater Kansas City of United, the United Way of Greater Kansas City. And so that benefited people immediately. On the capital improvement side, the thirty-six point nine million dollars. So we have, on the city side, we have thirteen projects that were funded, and it's actually six that are complete and seven underway. And if you do have questions about any of these internal-type infrastructure projects, we do have people from the departments here that can provide additional information. The financial report doesn't tell the full story. You'll see on these different projects, we might not have spent money, but that doesn't mean, well, a hundred percent of it's encumbered, and they've been doing design, or they've been waiting for equipment that's on order. So we just haven't processed invoices, but much of the work is underway. And much of it has been ordered, and it's just in the process of being installed, and then we'll pay the invoices. The two that are listed up there, the KC, KPD, Real Crime Center, and the Quandero Basketball Courts, both were done. Those are two of the five completed. So the details, as I said, are in your report. But the others that are completed are, most of the rec centers got new HVAC. Eisenhower's not quite done. They're waiting for the equipment. But those were, and I say new HVAC, I should clarify, they didn't have HVAC to start with. This was the first time they had HVAC so that they could have clean, recirculated air. On the county side, we had seven projects funded. Two of them are complete, and five of them are underway. Again, we've got folks here, if you have questions about any of those that are done or underway. But we do have a detailed impact report that gives you the information of how that money was used, what it was used for, et cetera. So in your packet is a project spending report that looks like this. And it highlights for you how much we had originally in the budget, or the current budget, how much we've actually spent, paid out on invoices, and how much is remaining. And the ones that have money remaining are the projects that we consider underway. Sometimes, it's a little, it's accurate in that all the funding hasn't been spent. But one that strikes me is actually on the next page, where it's the same issue, is like Heathwood Spray Park, which is done and open, but we haven't paid all the invoices. And so it shows as an open project, but it's technically done. But just so that you know how this report works. So these are the projects that, like I said, are still underway. Much of them have anticipated completion dates by the end of this year, well in advance of the end of '26. Then on the next page, that's all the projects that you guys identified to reallocate funding for. So this was the list that you guys identified. We provided, here's how much money we could reallocate. You all had identified and got consensus on how we wanted to spend those dollars. And so you can see, many of them are already done, but there's a few of them that are still underway. But again, it doesn't tell the whole story because, for example, the transit bus shelters, they're on order, and some of them have been installed. And so as the equipment comes in to replace those bus shelters, and as the contractor goes out and installs them, then we pay the invoices. So it's definitely in progress. It's not just sitting there. There's quite a bit going on with that project. Then, the next page is the, what I call, the commission subrecipients. And I distinguish that because you all had a committee, and you all had, back in like '22, decided that there was an application process, and different entities applied for funding, and then they were selected and awarded funding. So that's this list. We have other subrecipients, technically, for the federal government's purposes, that might be through a Health Department initiative, and they then contracted with an agency that's technically a subrecipient. So this isn't just all the outside agencies we worked with. There's others as well. But these are the ones that were identified for the commission. And as you can see there, many of them are already done. We only have, out of twenty, we have fifteen complete, and we have five underway. And a couple of those are actually complete, but we're waiting on the final paperwork or final invoice to pay them. And so we're very happy that those have been proceeding, as well as they have. In your report, the documents you got in the packet, there's a subrecipient report that IParametrics provided, which gives you the financials that match these financials. And then there's also the impact summary that tells you what they've done with the money and how many people they've benefited. So you can see, out of the twelve million dollars that we had as a budget, we've spent ten point four, and we have about one point seven left. The two big dollar amounts, or there's actually a couple of big dollar amounts, but the two that were anticipated to go longer was the KU Project Eagle. That's a, like preschool-age classroom experience for children from Wyandotte County. And they were originally, when they were awarded, they were given until the end of '26 to do their program. So from the very beginning, we knew that was one project that was going to go the long, the full term. As opposed, you'll see, the others had completion dates that were sooner because we were trying to get the money out in the community. And then Young Women on the Move was an organization that, I think they had some turnover in staff, and so we just didn't get their subrecipient agreement executed very quickly in comparison to the others. But they are executed and underway and doing great work. So that's well underway as well. So in terms of the overall impact, I'm sure that we could invite the agencies here to tell you their stories and about the people they've helped. I'm sure the departments that directly serve people could tell you their stories. If that's something you want in the future, glad to arrange that. But I took a quick look at our impact summary, and I just counted up. Anybody who said that they've served people directly, and that means that there's documentation that proves that. It's not just they said, "I serve people," but we've gotten documentation that shows they gave a thousand vaccines, or whatever the item might be. And it adds up to a hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven people that directly benefited from these funds. And that does not even include housing, or it does include, I'm sorry, the public health assistance, vaccinations, food assistance, job training. There were a lot of people that, through COVID, lost their job because businesses laid them off. And this was to help them get prepared and get a job, help them find a new job, renovating homes so that they had acceptable air quality, for example, renovating shelter spaces for people that were unhoused, and making sure that they were ADA compliant. And then one of our reallocation projects was the one you all identified, Vernon School, which is doing some renovation of their building. So it's just amazing, thinking about, there's a hundred and ten thousand people directly benefited. But that doesn't even include all these capital projects. So we have a storm project. We have a sanitary sewer project. We have lots of community center projects. We have the Spray Park project, and that doesn't include those people. So it's even more thousands and thousands of people that will benefit because of the decisions this commission made and how these dollars were used to benefit the community and not just to fund operations at the UG, but to really benefit and invest in our people and our community. We also partnered with our two cities that are largest within our Wyandotte County footprint. Bonner Springs is doing the Second Street Waterline Project. That was what they were doing. And they actually are nearly done. They expect to be done this month with that project. So they were able to address one of their infrastructure projects, which was eligible. And then Edwardsville, Kansas, had a couple of things that they did. Some improvements to their municipal building, a fire station, and then adding sidewalks on 104th Street. And they've spent about eight hundred thousand dollars, and everything else is under contract. So they've been making good headway as well. But that was also investment that the commission directed for these dollars. So with that, I'm going to stop and answer questions. I kept it to thirty minutes. And like I said, there's a lot of detail in the report. And if you guys have questions, or if you want to hear more details later from different entities or agencies, glad to arrange that. Just trying to be sensitive, too. I know you all have had a lot of meetings in the recent past, and so I wanted to be sensitive to the time that you had.
Thank you, CFO. Commissioner Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. I see where you had Bonner and Edwardsville up there, about the same amount of money. And Bonner Springs is a second-class city, and Edwardsville is a third class. But it seems like Edwardsville, well, Edwardsville did get more money than Bonner. Is that because Bonner didn't ask for more, or?
No, it actually was because there was a little miscommunication early on. And when Edwardsville got their bids and awarded their bids, it was slightly more than our allocation. And so we just went ahead and funded that six thousand dollars difference. But in terms of the fact that the two cities are different, initially, the commission allocated a million three for both of them. And so then there was just that little bit that was based on their bids. And we didn't run into that problem with the other.
Well, we want to keep the mayor in Edwardsville happy, you know, she, we need to do that.
Hey, any other questions from the commission?
I think, I would think that we want to make sure that the, all mayors in Wyandotte County are happy.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. I'd like to be happy as well, so. Thank you, Commissioner Stites. Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I do think we probably have undersold and undertold, if that's even a word, the impact of ARPA. And so while our time is precious here, just getting all of our schedules in line for a meeting, I do think a connection with our communications department to see, maybe we can do a series? Maybe we can have some highlights? You all can ask us, as, you know, the eleven of us, what are some of the projects that really stuck out? We can do them district by district, right? And kind of see just what we could highlight? Because I do not think our community really understands how important the American Rescue Plan was to our community. And if we do not tell that story of how it has impacted lives, how it has distributed vaccines, built new housing for our infrastructure, oh my goodness. I mean, we are seeing the impact of that right now, and more investment is needed. But I don't necessarily think it has to be a meeting here, but I do think, Administrator, if we can have communications work with us to tell that story so people can see that we were responsible, we were equitable, and we were impactful with these dollars, it can go a long way for building trust and for giving you all credit for getting us through a very, very tumultuous time, and then our community, the nonprofits, and folks that worked so hard to get us through. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burns?
Commissioner Davis makes a very good point. And also, I think our PR person should also tell the community we don't have any more money left. So don't expect what has happened in the past. You know, I think that point needs to get across. But Commissioner Davis makes a very good point. We need to brag a little bit about it to our constituents.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner King?
Commissioner Davis made a good point. I don't know if you guys realize, but when COVID and the setup we had at Kmart at Seventy-Eighth and State, our governor flew to see the president, and then a lot of the municipalities around the country trying to mimic what we did, and nobody knew it. And I think that's something that's very important to say. We took the money, we used it wisely, and not only we do so good, a lot of other municipalities followed our suit. And I think it's important that we do. And no, we don't like bragging about what we're doing, but they need to know where the money went, how wisely the money was spent. And there's not a lot left in the kitty.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrows.
Thank you. I remember early on, when ARPA was distributed to us, it was, they had a state formula by population to county and additional formula that they utilized. The part that I think a few of us commissioners raised was the eighteen million replacement money to go into our overall general fund budget. There were questions about where that money was needing to be supplanted into our budget. And, Mr. Minister, I don't think we ever got an answer to that. They plugged in a number, and that was, I don't want to say a guesstimate, but they plugged in a number, and I know there was a few of the commissioners, one of them's not here this evening, that asked about that. Where did, what was it we were losing that warranted eighteen million dollars going into the general fund? And I look and see that there's four or five projects left to be used on funds up till '26 that haven't, have they even started? Because I don't see them started in the report. But I think that was some of the questions. And I know I wasn't on any of those committees that made the determine, made the determination as to where the money went, who got the money, and how much money it would be. I bet, there was a few commissioners that asked that question about the monies that were supplanted, where that figure came from. And that was a couple of years ago. Shelley, way before, you know, you were here and through an interim and a couple of, since then, so.
Right. So it's actually not eighteen, it's twenty-four million, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And we, because we have to, we had to supply US Treasury with detailed reports. And so we pulled salaries that were funded by name, by amount, and that was the money that was basically replaced. That freed up money for us to do, this is just what we did with ARPA money. This isn't what we did in total in terms of responding to a worldwide pandemic and a crisis. And so that freed up money for all cities and counties. And so that freed up money for all cities and counties and universities to be able to meet those additional needs. And so we can provide you what was provided and accepted, approved, completely permissible with the twenty-four million, exactly, I mean, to the detail of how that money was documented. I don't know that we have reports on other things that were done that aren't funded through federal dollars, but we can certainly reach out to the departments to try and give some narrative about that because it was, there wasn't a compliance reporting requirement, and a lot of it just was happening. A lot of what Commissioner Kane just talked about in terms of the Health Department and the efforts that we did get recognition from the president in terms of things we were doing were not ARPA-funded initiatives. They were just the work that our employees were doing. And that included extra time, extra effort, and those types of things. But I'm very, very happy to get you the details. As opposed to have any of the projects not started, I would say a hundred percent of the projects have started because they're under contract. If there's specific ones you want to know about, we could certainly answer those. Again, this is a financial report, so we may not have paid an invoice yet, but work really may be underway. Or there's a few buildings and logistics capital projects that there's, they relate to one another, there's improvements being done, for example, at the courthouse. And you have to do them in certain sequence. And we have folks that can help explain that. But so it shows not done, but it's not for work not being done. It's working with the contractor, and you have to do the tuck pointing on the outside before you do the roof. And then you have to do the roof before you can do the HVAC. And it's getting all of that lined out. And but they intend to spend down this money by the end of the year. So it doesn't tell the full story, but there is not one effort that hasn't started and isn't underway. This just tells you how much money has been spent out the door. But if you have any specific questions now or later, I'm glad to answer those too. Because I feel like this report, you know, of the eighty-seven million, it shows we've actually spent about sixty-one million. And so it feels like, well, hey, you still have twenty-four million. Most of those are in very large projects and are capital projects, which of course take more than just a year. And so, but we've got very specific plans to get those spent down by the end of this year, even advance of twenty-six. By the time we get into next year, I expect that we'll have a very small handful of projects that are still going on because they're permitted to. Like those two sub recipients, Young Woman on the Move and KU's Early Childhood Program, we're permitting them to continue on longer so that, because one of them got under a contract, not very, not early in the process, and the other just planned to do it for two years, so. But glad to answer specifics, Commissioner, if you have, or allow other folks if you have any particulars that you're interested in.
The only.
I was going to say, I think I can maybe answer some of that, Debbie Johnson, Deputy CFO. The, in the beginning, the revenue replacement money, there was a specific calculation that had to be done for that twenty-four million. And it, we, that money went toward salaries and benefits. That was an applicable charge that we could use that money for. And you had to take, the initial year was twenty nineteen before the pandemic occurred. And the formula compared your current revenue with twenty nineteen. And then each year, there was a percentage that was allowed for an increase up to, I think the Treasury had set a maximum. And so there was a formula completed for that. We've got that paperwork that we can show you as to how we came up with the amount. And it didn't just go to the general funds, it went to every fund that had salaries and benefits.
If I remember correctly, there was an attempt to pay our emergency responders a bonus that some of us requested it go to emergency responders. And I think what they did is backfilled that with the, some of them were furloughed and put on a, if I remember correctly, a five-day furlough. And they could have gotten unemployment, but instead they used ARPA money to backfill that. I just remember some discussion in reference to how those dollars were spent, and there was some question about it. And I don't know, I'm not making accusations, I'm just trying to recall the conversation. Because I do know that many of us wanted to ensure that our first responders were being rewarded for the work that they were doing. They were putting in a tremendous amount of time, energy, and hours in a very stressful environment, a very challenging environment at that time. And for whatever reason, I don't believe that occurred. And that was some of the questions that a few of us on the commission had asked about the eighteen million as to where did that money go in to supplant the general fund dollars? Ken, I would like to know what bonuses were paid through ARPA? And what, you know, I don't need to know what person received them, but how much was paid in bonuses and how much of it went to our first responders, at the least?
I can certainly check that. I don't have the information on the bonuses, but I, we only did the calculation for the revenue replacement that was applied from the start to, for the initial year, I think it was twenty-one. And it was put in for the twenty-twenty-two budget and twenty-twenty-three budget. But we can check, and we can also get you the distribution to how much went to each fund.
Well, it's hard to go back and remember all those discussions and everything that just we went through with the Health Department's reports and the mask mandate and all the stuff that took up a lot of time to ensure that this community was kept safe and that we were working collectively with our providers and our responders. I think it was extremely important, we fared very well in this community, so kudos to us for doing that. Just those questions I just remember having gone through. I think it would be important for us maybe to identify where some of those dollars went to ensure that we got the best return on investment. And I do know that the initial tranche came out, you only had like three months to get it out, and there wasn't much of a requirement, just get it out. And then the second tranche that came out had the tighter requirements on reporting and qualifications, and those are the dollars that we're kind of dealing with today because they had to be spent by the end of twenty-six.
Right, the cares money came out in, I believe that was twenty, that must have been twenty, twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. And yeah, we got it in the second half of the year, and it had to be spent by December of that year. The ARPA money came out in two separate, we received half for the city and half for the county in two separate years and had to account for that.
Do you remember how much the cares dollars was?
Like around thirty-seven million.
Okay, and that's not in addition to the eighty-four million, is it?
It is.
So that's a hundred, hundred and some million dollars. Do we have any permanent employees that are with us now that were brought in under ARPA that we're going to be responsible for in this budget moving forward? Any programs that we're going to be responsible for that does one-time dollars address?
Shelley, can you even CFO? No, we don't. We do not. All those were positions were grant-funded, and whenever we have any position grant-funded, we make sure that employee signs an agreement, they're told so that they don't get blindsided, your grant-funded employee. So when the grant ends, your position ends. And so we've completed all of that. I will say some of the ARPA money, and again, it's hard to keep straight, you know, on how monies were used. But some of this ARPA money was used as incentive pay to get vaccinations. And so there is details in here, that was a specific program for employees to get vaccinations so that if they're out working with the public or they're with the Health Department, to incentivize them, not require, but incentivize them to get a vaccination. That is one of the initiatives the commission had funded. So I don't know that that's really a bonus, but the details are in here. There was about seventeen hundred employees that benefited from that.
And I think it's important, the reason why I asked that question about permanent employee and stuff, because I think it's important the public understand and organizations understand, this was one-time money that was distributed across the state to our communities to provide the programs necessary under a health crisis issue. And those, if they were, if there's an opportunity to create a legacy program through that initial funding, I think the reality is it can't happen. Those were one-time dollars. So, well, I appreciate your report. And I do have a few questions in reference to the timelines on some of these, but they're not, they're not critical. I can, they're questions we can get answered later, thank you.
Commissioner Burrows.
Alan Howes, Assistant Administrator, you asked the question about the furloughs. So the money for that was from a special state program. So I think part of the challenge is there were multiple funding streams that were coming in. There's CARES Act and ARPA stuff, but there was also allocations that were coming in through like KC ATA for transit. And so it, it's a sort of a challenging picture to tease all those different pieces out and where that the funding was coming out from different parts.
I just like to request that, can we find out if our first responders were paid a bonus? Because there was, there was a movement afoot by members of the commission to ensure our first responders were given, I call it a bonus. It was additional monies for the service they put in in the long hours. And I don't know that we ever got that report, and if we did, I'm remiss for not remembering it. But I just was wanting to ensure that that was something that occurred or why it didn't occur. Thank you.
That information, a lot of communities called it hazard pay because those people are out in the community interacting with people face-to-face that may have COVID, that type of thing. So it might have come from the initial cares money or from that ARPA, but I don't think it's any ARPA money. But we'll, but again, to Alan's point, money was coming from different sources, different state agencies, different transit agencies, so it does get a little confusing. But we will definitely find out and let you know where it came from, if it happened, and how much were those hazard pay and bonuses, whatever.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just had a quick question. I believe that for both carriers and for the ARPA funding, that in case of the questions asked, how was it decided these organizations that are listed got these funds? I believe that there were committees that were set up. I just didn't see that in here. It'd be good to make sure that the public knows how that process went. So if there's questions, well, why did this organization, A, as opposed to organization B? How were they selected? And then I do agree with the commissioners that mentioned, I think that transparency is really key and sharing the story. You're talking over a hundred million dollars' worth of financial investment through a variety of networks to benefit not just unified government, more importantly, our residents as we navigated through COVID and the recovery. One thing I noticed, there's, I see they ask from a lot of these organizations, which is great. I see the allocations that were approved. The question that I've been asked, and so I'm going to share this, and maybe someone can answer it. Where's the accountability come in? And this is a question I don't know. So if Garner's LLC, Non-for-Profit Incorporated, for whatever, received one dollar because I wanted to do something special with that as part of the reporting process, I can tell you that I'm going to use it for whatever purpose, and I've been awarded. How does that work for the unified government as far as the auditing? To make sure that I give you my ledgers, my receipts, and things of those nature, to make sure that those funds were used in the manner that they were allocated for.
Right, so for the first part of your comments, questions was, was there a committee that determined which agencies got the allocations? For the commission sub recipients, the answer is yes. Was an application process, and the commission picked the agencies and initiatives in particular that they were going to put the money towards. Whenever a department was doing something that worked with an outside agency, it would either be an existing contract that was amended, or it would be something through the RFP process. They would solicit proposals to get a different agency to submit based on whatever the initiative, if it was a COVID vaccine clinic or something, they needed to partner with somebody. They would do those kinds of RFPs. As far as the accountability goes, that's where I think we've had a real strength. So with iParametrics, we contracted with a consultant, and the consultant has met with all of the sub recipients routinely before one dollar is given to a sub recipient from the U G from these dollars. They go through the consultant, they look at the actual invoices, how the money was spent. In particular, if it is eligible expenses, and they have had a few things they found where something might not be eligible, and so they needed them to substitute something else in. And they worked with them, all of them were under a contract too. So they had specific performance efforts that they had to hit in terms of what they were doing. And then, so it's been the financial side, but also the looking at their files and doing actual site work with these agencies. If they say they benefited, you know, a hundred mothers by providing breast milk or pack-in-place, then they look at the files to see, did you document who they went to? Did you document that they were low income? Did you, they look at their documentation and then certified us that it was used as it was said. The documentation is there, they have copies of it that we have access to. So it's been very tight compliance in terms of these outside agencies. And for a lot of them, I mean, this was an infusion of a lot of dollars, and they were kind of standing up some of their operations in this process. And so I think they appreciated the help to make sure that they followed the rules because it's not like the federal government made this really easy to understand all the rules. And even some of the more recent sub recipients like Vernon School. iParametrics and I both have helped them in learning how to write a bid and making sure we advertise the bids so that they can get contractors to submit bids, that they get the best price. These are not normal things that an agency like that would have done, but it's actually helped too for capacity building for them. So now they have that expertise for them to get additional grants, hopefully. So that's, that kind of active engagement's been ongoing. And I feel very confident that these agencies have performed. The dollars were used as they were told to be used in the contract based on what the commission approved and that they followed through.
Thank you, that's good information. I know we have a lot of very inquisitive constituents, residents, action groups, whatever you want to call them, that they have a right to know. And I believe in full transparency on everything the unified government does and making access to the information not cumbersome for our constituents, our residents, but readily available. And so where I'm going with that question is, if I want to find out, you know, COVID, the ARPA funds, the CARES funds, everything that we just talked about, you know, who decided, how it was used, how it was audited, how it was allocated, the positive impact to the residents of Wyandotte County in whatever capacity, where would I go to find that information for free? And then, and then also, I agree with Commissioner Burns, and I think Commissioner Kane mentioned it as well. And just letting them, the public know that these funds have been exhausted, and they did serve their purpose. But they're not funds that are going to be reoccurring in the foreseeable future.
Right, and I appreciate that. I very much appreciate that you all are suggesting ways for us to really promote and also be transparent to show how responsible this community has been. On our website, that's what I'm looking at right now, there is some general information, but it's a bit dated, honestly. So we need to revamp this and put this information out there. If we do some either narrative, we could do probably quickly, but the videos are a great idea to showcase what some of these agencies did, showcase people that benefited directly from these dollars. These are wonderful ideas, and we will definitely get on that. To be able to tell the community, not only are we accountable for the dollars, we, this, we are accountable for the dollars, but it was the way the dollars are spent. I mean, the fact that one hundred and ten thousand direct services to people. And maybe, and that's just a person. One person might receive ten services, ten things, ten times, food. It's one person, I counted, but it's like ten meals, you know, or something like that. And then it doesn't even include all those community-type projects that thousands of people go to. So I do agree that it would be really good to promote how we use these dollars and frankly appreciate our federal government for supporting communities. You know, when this whole thing happened, as you all lived through, we all did. And Commissioner Burrows with the. happened, as you all lived through, we all did, and Commissioner Barros with the revenue replacement, part of it was revenues were going to fall off. Nobody's going out to eat anymore, so your sales tax is going to fall. You have a budget adopted, not expecting to have a worldwide pandemic. And so some of what the federal government did was be nimble and try and infuse some money early on to help cities, counties, colleges, schools address the basic needs that we provide every day. And so we're getting to the tail end of this, all this impact that we've had, we need to tell the story because it is remarkable of what was done. And there are so many, there are hundreds of people that have worked on this in the agencies, but also the unified government that should be appreciated for the work that they did, hundreds of people. So anyway, it's nice to be able to tell a good news story, particularly in this day and age. And so we will do everything we can to kind of lift this up, to show the leadership of the mayor and commission what was able to be done, because it is a lot of money.
And I agree. When you're talking over $100 million money, I think we owe it to our residents to make sure that we share that story, but then also that the information is accurate, it's timely, and it's up to date, and it's maintained. It's a good way to close this narrative out and move past COVID, and just make sure that that information is available for those that may want to view it and see the positive impact that we were able to receive from the federal government to help us, this community, get through COVID. So thank you all so much. Appreciate the presentation. It was really good information. We are now going to go into executive session for consultation with the unified government attorneys on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-type relationship, such as litigations or claims against the unified government of Wyandotte County and Kansas City, Kansas. Okay. Need a motion to take us into executive session?
Mayor, I move the commission go into executive session until 6:30 PM in the fifth floor conference room for consultation with our attorneys, which would be deemed privileged regarding matters related to litigation, set for mediation and guidance from our attorneys related to potential litigation as permitted under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And that David Johnston, Wendy Green, Casey Meyer, Sherry Courtney, Ryan Dink, and George Sims remain as needed to participate in discussion, and that we reconvene in open session at 6:30 PM here in the fifth floor conference room.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
There's a second.
Roll call, please, Court.
Roll call. Burns?
Aye.
Ramirez?
Aye.
Kane?
Lopez?
Aye.
Hites? Okay, Commissioner Stites has left the meeting. Davis?
Aye.